Don't use later, okay? Because I don't know how else to do this.
That's fine, but I still need the transcript on paper so I can do the notes.
Yeah, you can just toggle it off for you, Bess, if you don't want to see it.
You see where it says "live transcript" down there by "recording"?
Yeah.
Hit that button.
Pause, but it just comes stopped recording.
No, just if you hit "live transcript," you'll see where it says "hide subtitles."
No, but I want, so we have a script. I'm sorry, I'm saying the wrong thing.
Yeah, what do you, oh, the script, you don't have the link. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know what you meant.
I meant that.
I apologize.
It's in the Google Drive.
I looked, I looked. Maybe I'm looking in the wrong spot.
Okay, I just put the link in the chat.
Thank you.
My apologies, I didn't know what you meant.
That's okay, maybe I said the wrong thing. Okay, let me see if I can get it up. I think we're all getting better at Zoom.
Okay, so could somebody figure out how to keep the screen in speaker view?
What do you mean? I don't even know what that means. What do you mean?
Can just happen. Like, are you guys seeing me as the main person talking right now?
Yeah, you're right.
It's up to each individual of the tablet.
Oh, wait, now I see Steve. It moves back and forth. Are you seeing me now?
Yes, I see you now.
Okay, I think it goes back and forth between our heads.
Okay, cool. And then nobody's in the waiting room, right?
No.
There was a woman at one point, but I don't know what happened to her.
Put her in the waiting room.
She had been.
Maybe she left the meeting. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't see her now. I feel like it was something like Shiran or something.
So far, so good. Alright, so, one, two, three. Wait, there's only three of us. We need three more people, right?
Yeah, yep. Oh, brother, do you want me to reach out to anyone?
Are you guys hearing a beep thing?
Yeah, it must have been in someone's background.
Everybody, we have met, so we're gonna get started at 7:03.
Okay, I will call the roll. This is also a reminder to please sign into the attendance sheet. Welcome to our meeting. Councilmember Camille Cazaretty.
Present.
Antonia Ferraro, yes, I'm here. Tia Schelsteed.
Present.
Kimberley Scott.
Present.
Claudia Lechuga. Maybe she'll join us. I don't know if anybody has her cellphone number. Maybe they could text her.
She just emailed saying she'll be a few minutes late.
Ah, okay. Great. Yvonne Bonda.
Present.
Mark Bizzard.
Present.
Bess Abrams.
Present.
And Crystal Kason. All right, how many people do we have on this call? We have 12 people on the call. Would anyone like to perform the role of parliamentarian? No volunteers? Yeah?
I will.
All right, thank you.
If, there are no objections.
That would be great. So, would you mind reading the teleconference protocol? Yvonne, do you have the link to that? I can share it with you.
Please, if you could share it with me.
Okay, I will share it with you in the chat. Okay, there, it is there for you, Yvonne.
Is there anyone from the community on the call that needs to hear it, or can we waive the reading of it?
Um, well.
There are people here.
Go for it, then.
Alright. Due to the pandemic, CEC 15 will continue practicing social distancing and will be conducting meetings through teleconference until further notice. Tonight's special session meeting will include multiple public comment periods so that we might allow for additional feedback from our school communities. For your own privacy, we ask that you turn off your camera and please use audio only. Please also sign into the Google Talk link in chat. When you comment, please respect the privacy of others. Please do not include names of children or staff. The public comment period is meant for comments, but as is customary, CEC 15 wants to hear your comments and concerns and help you get them addressed as needed. When answers cannot be given in session, we will provide them in our weekly e-blast or in an upcoming meeting. Please sign up for CEC 15 emails at cec15@schools.nyc.gov. If you want to make a comment, please identify yourself by using the raise hand feature or you might include your questions and contact information in the chat. If you're calling, if you're calling in, press asterix number eight, asterix nine, sorry, to comment. We will call you by the last four digits of your phone number. Speakers will be called on one at a time and will be allowed one to two minutes each for comments based on the number of speakers we have. We will hear as many speakers as the time allows. If you prefer not to speak but will still like to submit a question or comment, it is possible that we will not have time for your questions. So, the best way to get your question answered is always to write to cec@cecfifteen@schools.nyc.gov. And in our agenda, we have the budget amendment tonight. Kimberley, good evening.
Just unmute myself, thank you, Yvonne. So, one of the main purposes of tonight's meeting was to discuss our budget amendment. Because of COVID, we have an excess amount in our budget for this year. And the question is, what can we do with these funds? I propose, from our budget from August 4th, and that's a link in the script, we had $4,500 allocated to other expenses. I propose that we try to put that back to DOE or send that back to the DOE for what they see fit. I have not heard any sort of global proposal for a initiative similar to what we did last year that went for students in temporary housing or anything like that. So, I think it's, it's sort of at the discretion of the DOE, but basically turning this money back over to the DOE so we don't lose it, or so it's just not lost in the ether. I think every other budget amount that we have, every other line item, we would probably use, and we have used it in this past year. We have $5,000 on our P card. I think it's very important that we keep our $3,000 member reimbursement. We have parent workshops with, which Camille worked very diligently on this past year, and I think we're very successful. So, I want to keep those going. We have community recognition awards for $1,500, which I think that, between Camille and Mark, I saw some communication between the two of you on how we could best use that fund. So, basically, it's really the $4,500 that we had designated in August to be other expenses placeholder. We don't have any other expenses at this point in time. So, let's, I propose that we, we send that back to the DOE.
Kimberley, may I say something?
Of course you may say something, Matt.
Well, first off, thank you. Thank you, thank you for being the treasurer. Thank you for being so on top of this. I have a couple of questions. One is 400 for CEC 15 AA travel expenses. I don't think we're going to be using that at all now. So, I, I think maybe we can put that in the other expenses line item.
Okay, so that would bring it up to 4,900, okay.
Then regarding our $5,000 P card, I'd just like to get some information from Steve if he could speak to that because the P card was inside his name. And at the point that she left, I am not sure, but we may, that may purge or we may be able to reassign it to a new person. Yeah, I just want to try to understand how that works a little better. So, Steve, are you able to talk any of that?
Yeah, a little bit. I'm still waiting. Go ahead, Bess.
Just say what a P card is, because I don't know.
The purchase card.
Yeah, it's a purchase, it's a credit card that our AA uses for incidentals.
Yeah.
P stands for procurement.
Yeah, procurement card. The, so the procurement card, it's put in the name of the administrative assistant. So, once the administrative assistant leaves, you know, you can't use that card anymore. If you were to get a new AA, but once they're hired, it usually takes about a month to get a new P card. As you know, we're pushing it a little bit towards the end of the term, right? So, I was waiting to hear back from Carol if you can use, sorry. And so yeah. So, the question is whether it might be best to try to move that money to another line, if allowable, or if you'd be able to access it. I think if it just sits on the P card and you're not able to get it over in time, I'd worry that you would lose that money.
I think the question to Carol is if anybody else can use it.
No. I know the only person that can use it is the person whose name is on it, and that is the name of his name.
Do we have a sense if there's any money left on it?
Almost the entire thing is still there. There was only one purchase and that purchase might fall into question, actually. So, let's just assume it's very, very close to 5,000. If we were going to move that anywhere, I might want to actually move it into the parent and student presentations because I've been talking to Anita and I have a document I'm drafting to send to the public regarding submission of bids or a variety of different options. Ideas that I've collected through the District 15 Office and through parents and PTAs throughout the district of things that they're interested in. So, it occurred to me that it might be worth it to just send that out to bid officially and see what we get back. And so, say, for example, each of these workshops is about between $500 and $600. You know, that would just allow us to have so many more. And eventually, the money that we don't use is purchased back to the DOE anyway. Another thing that we could do with some of the money, I believe, and Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, I had actually suggested to the DOE at this point in time, might we be allowed to give some of our money to the district office? Because the district offices don't typically have a lot of money in their budget anyway. And we know that Superintendent Scott is really trying to do a lot of things with culturally responsive curriculum and her equity teams. And I'm sure that you could use a little bit extra funding to just support where they can across the district and at various schools. And I believe that she has the ability to do that a little bit differently than we do. And Anita, not to put you on the spot, but I see you did come on the call and I, I thank you for joining us this evening.
Right, Camille, I think that before, we really do have to get guidance from Carol and then basically face as to whether, so Steve, whether we can do that.
Do you, may I ask a question, Steve?
Yeah.
Can they give the money to schools?
Not to individual schools. If you want, I can bring up the guidance and share my screen that has it all laid out.
Maybe if we sponsored something for a school or schools.
Oh, I, did you guys see what Claudia wrote in the chat?
Yeah, I'm, I had something in mind, and that's something that some of our Sunset Park schools have used in the past. And I know from early on, like when their budgets were severely cut or anticipated to be cut at the beginning of the year, they had to scale back a little bit, but there's an organization called Sunset Spark that provides like tech and robotics classes already to schools in the district and sort of have curriculum that's apparently in line with whatever the guidelines are for curriculum on certain subjects. That may be a good option because they would be able to pivot directly into that easily. And that could, I feel like also I'd spoken to Katia early on when it was sort of the idea of like what services could be provided to schools overall that may not have been able to provide direct services for their own buildings. That was sort of an outlet of what we pursued of. If, you know, we sort of contracted with them and then all the schools district-wide would have access to these curriculum or activities would be great. I'll add there.
Steve is trying to share his screen. I don't know if we, somebody has some control over that.
I could do it. I was just waiting, making sure it was okay.
Yeah, because I think that before we get too far down this path, I do recollect that the guidelines are pretty strict on, on what we can, what the CEC budget can go toward.
So, I can tell you that what I did with my budget, what little money we had is we took everything that we could pull that wasn't for, let's say, the coffee or BlackBerries or supplies. And we put it into one specific pot and we divided it up among six of our media schools and gave them the opportunity to each buy about $3,000 worth of supplies. Because we had to reallocate it earlier than you guys do.
Yeah, so I'm sharing it now.
There it is.
Yeah, the, the first part really deals with what Carol is speaking about right now. If you can't read it, I can read it aloud.
Yeah, I can't read it, but also can you summarize it? You should, you know it better than any of us.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty short.
So, we can move on, and not to be so direct, but.
Well, I think it's important that, you know, this, like, it's pretty clear. You know, you can share or you can request to distribute part or all funding to the district office for whatever allowable purpose or deemed necessary by the superintendent. If the superintendent and the chief operating officer approves the request, the superintendent, you know, you will provide the education council with an explanation of how the funds are spent and supporting documentation. So, education councils may request to purchase and ship goods. So, these are some other things you can do to the district office for distribution at the discretion of the superintendent. At the superintendent and the chief operating officer approves a request, the superintendent will provide, you know, with documentation to the council. And you also may request to distribute part or all funding to a central office for whatever purposes are deemed necessary by that office head as long as, at the same time, the chief operating officer approves. And then you would get a documentation of how the money was spent.
Steve, are these, is this a chancellor's reg? What, this looks like an email. What are these?
This is the guidelines on spending.
Who?
Update on allowable, like, council expenditures and allowable member reimbursement.
But from the DOE or like who?
Yeah, from Face, legal, the budget office.
This is an interpretation by Face's legal team.
This is it. This is, this is, this is not an interpretation. This is what we can spend our money on.
Yeah, but this is an email, Kimberley. I just want to know exactly.
It's a cut and paste.
If we could go into the original document, but I, I mean, this is, this is it.
This is how it was sent out, you know, to all CECs. You want me to get it in a PDF form? I can.
No, I just am wondering what the, what the, what the guidance, like, who's, is this from the chancellor? Is it a chancellor's reg?
It's from Face and the budget office.
Based on how they feel or based on what?
Based on the current budget situation.
Okay, so this is like a wish list for Face.
No.
This is what's allowed.
This is what's allowed. This is what we can do with our money.
Based on what authority, Camille?
Based on the authority that is, is given to Face and the budget, the office of the budget. This is not.
If you try, if you try to put in anything else, the SGO is gonna deny it.
I think what Mark is trying to ask is where is, where in the regs is this? And I think this is a cut and paste from the regs is what I'm guessing.
Yeah, that's, that's my other point. If it's, if it's, if it's part of the chancellor's regs and this is, this, these are the rules, that's great. If it's, I've seen a lot of these come down where there's no authority to tell us what we need to do on these things. So, it's a big difference between if we have latitude to spend this any way we want to versus whether or not Face just feels like it's inappropriate because they made a, a call on something. We do have some autonomy in some of our decisions.
Okay, Mark, there is a, like, 50-page document that goes through each procurement code and what is allowed for each one. And if we were to try to allocate funds to something that's not there, we would have to get Face approval to do so. I can find that document for you.
That's just presuming that we are DOE surrogates as opposed to elected body, and that we have to follow DOE procurement rules.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I disagree with that, but I also think it's fine because I'm totally fine with reallocating the monies back to the, I think this is a small amount of money relative to the scheme of things, and I think our highest best use is spent on other things. And to the extent that we're just talking about $5,000 and returning it to the district, I'm all for that. But, but I, I think we could, we could be spending our time elsewhere, but I also do think, Steve, like, getting the, the statutory authority in an email that has no source references to kind of where the authority to tell us.
I'm going to put in the chat the full source reference for you, Mark.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, like, with the budget, right, the budget comes from the city, it's given to the CEC and there are rules that govern it. Yeah, I could find the document, and these are just the current amendments to those rules. these are just the current amendments to those rules considering COVID and the budget situation in the city and the state.
I totally understand. It's just.
I understand what you're saying, though, Mark.
Where, where, what are, what are, what we're subject to.
Mark, not Mark, Steve?
Yes.
Hey, I dropped my question in the chat because it said goods. Could you define what goods are? We can spend it on?
The examples given here are hotspots, electronic devices, headphones, keyboards and supplies.
So do we have any outstanding needs in that area if we know?
But no, but Beth, we can't give it directly. It's given to the district office and they distribute it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. I can't see the screen at all, so.
Yeah.
Is, my only, my only take would be we reserve the amount of money we need left to get through the end of the year and we deliver the rest to the district office so they can allocate the way they want to under the reg we're looking at.
I, I totally agree with that proposal.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Camille, please, because I think we had discussed that you guys wanted to do some more parent outreach and you could bring in some really good speakers for five grand if you wanted to do that. I'm just putting it out there.
Well, the thing is that, folks, we have to submit this by Friday. So we have to come to a conclusion and vote on what this budget amendment is going to be by this Friday in order to submit it. So we don't have so much time for researching particular initiatives. I think that if we agree as a group to allocate the remainder of the P card, the 4,500 other expenses placeholder that we had to, back to the district, we can vote on something that is very concrete and, and give it back, it's submitted as part of our budget.
Kimberly, I mean, interrupt you, but Claudia, I saw your comment in the chat. I'm not minimizing the amount, but, but my point is in order to get it, in order to leverage that purchasing power in the best way, the district can give the money to the schools in exactly the way you're talking about. We can't. So in order to kind of, in order to kind of maximize the purchasing power of that amount that we're talking about, and they have people who know where needs to go, you gotta get it back to the superintendent. We can't do it. And so, so that was my point is, is, I think you can make the decision simple here is if we decide to reallocate the money back to the superintendent's office, she can, you know, she can, she can distribute in exactly the way you're talking about in the chat.
I appreciate that. I just don't know if there's a guarantee for that and it sort of comes out of our hands, of course.
Yeah, well, we can talk about that now.
Well, in the first line of this, it says that we are, we, the superintendent will provide the education council with an explanation of how the funds were spent and supporting documentation.
So can I make a suggestion? My suggestion is very simple. If you give me a list of schools that you want to give something to, then I can make that happen apparently based on this. In other words, you make the decision as what we're doing is we're, we're just meeting a deadline and I am happy to use it in any way you see fit. Once we've established that, that it can go into schools because I don't want the money, believe me. I want the schools to get it. And I'm thinking that you could divide it up between five schools and each school that is needy could provide hotspots or other technological support. Or you could say that you want to give it to Sunset Spark for a specific activity. It depends on what you want and then we can just allocate it. You can pick it, we'll allocate it.
But for, for this, the purpose of this conversation, we just have to be able to say that we are going to allocate it back to the district office.
Yeah.
Um, Kimberly, why don't you make an official motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we allocate.
Sorry, we have to do a public comment.
Ah, sorry.
Sorry.
We have public?
Okay.
We have public. We have at least one PTA president here. And thank you, members of the public for joining us. We have somebody from the comptroller's office here too, which is exciting. So at this point, I had shared the document earlier, but perhaps we could share it again in the chat. Nadjar, do you have any suggestions that you'd like to make? I hate to put you on the spot.
In regards to?
Just what, now, we're budgeting here if there are any other ideas. I mean, basically, like, we're supposed to solicit feedback from the public about how we're spending the money. I'm offering a period for feedback. Maybe she stepped away.
You responded to the chat, no comment.
Okay, great. Okay, then.
And I would just ask, Kimberly, if you make the motion, I just say to Claudia's point, you know, we, we make a motion to reallocate the funds back to the district for the specific purpose of redistributing to the most needy schools in the district. For.
Well said, Mark.
Well, I would say to the most needy schools in the district and/or to programs that would assist them. Yeah.
Just specify the amount.
Um, we are talking about $5,000 if, if the remainder of the P card amount, so whatever's not spent on the P card, the 4,500 that we had allocated to other expenses placeholder and the $400 that we had allocated to transportation of staff, seeing as nobody's being transported anywhere. So in, if the full P card, if the P card is fully at 5,000, that would be $9,900.
And just because I think these were really early on in the year when I was speaking with Katia and we were having the conversations about pooling funds across PTAs to have services provided that would benefit schools district wide. Sunset Spark had come up, but also Brooklyn Conservatory of Music that they could provide, you know, music lessons or access to music lessons for children at all of the schools that, you know, would have focused, of course, on, you know, schools that wouldn't even have access to those resources, period. But, you know, organizations like Sunset Spark, we'd also talked about because they were already providing and have continued to provide services to Sunset Spark, Sunset Park Schools despite not, you know, basically in kind throughout the whole pandemic, like tech support and also a lot of workshops for families. So focusing on those areas that, you know, were gravely impacted financially and organizations that could provide and sort, you know, provide a little levity for schools that were more impacted.
Well, you know, we can probably have another conversation about specifically how we want Anita to allocate this. But yeah, it sounds like we're pretty set, we're settled on those three amounts, the P card, the 4,500 in other expenses and the 400 in AA travel expenses, correct?
Correct.
Right. So I will second the motion to.
I'm sorry.
Hey.
What, Camille?
We take $2,000 out of office supplies and put 1,000 and 1,000 into parent and student workshops because it just feels highly unlikely we're going to spend $4,000 in office supplies in the next three months.
Take 2,000 from office supplies and split between parents and engagement.
Okay.
Parent engagement. What was the other?
Student presentation.
Student and parent, one student workshop and one parent workshop. I guess we rewrote it.
So I have a question. Kimberly, you said $9,000. I got lost with that amount.
Well, that, let's, let's start again, folks. Okay, so let's going from the, from the top along with Camille's recommendations. What we're, if the P card is fully funded, that's $5,000. We had on our budget from August, a $4,500 other expense placeholder. So that's available. That's 4,500. We have $400 for transportation for AA not being used. So that 400, 4,500 and 5,000 comes up, totals $9,900.
And we'll take $2,000, $1,000 each for parents and students.
Yeah, we're just reallocating, we're bringing down the supply line from $4,000. We're bringing it down to $2,000 and we are bumping up parent workshops to $4,000 and student presentation slash workshops up to $4,000.
Okay, so the motion will say $7,000 back to the district, basically.
No, it's still 9,900 back to the district.
Oh, oh, okay.
Uh, Camille, was the science fair part of the student presentations and activities?
In the past?
In the past.
I think so.
I'm just wondering what we used that for. Did we use it for anything else?
Uh, we didn't, I don't think we had a lot in the past in the student presentation line. We had bumped it up for this year and COVID.
Oh, because we wanted to do, did we want?
Wanted to do some of the things that Anita was suggesting with the art gallery.
Right, right, okay.
I wanted to do a building block event, which of course now nobody wants to be in the room together building.
Right, right.
Okay, so can we make this motion? Because we do want to, we have a couple of other things on this agenda?
Yes.
Should I restate it?
Sure.
Okay, make a motion that we take the balance of our P card, which at this point, we think is at $5,000, the line item that we had for other expenses at $4,500 and the line item that we had for transportation of staff at $400 totaling $9,900 to be allocated to the district office. We are also looking, included in this motion is reallocation of $4,000 to, of supplies, office supplies, down to $2,000 with $1,000 being allocated to parent workshops and an additional $1,000 being allocated to student presentations.
I second the motion. Uh, I'll do the roll call if you want me to. Camille Casaretti?
I agree. I approve.
Antonia Ferraro, yes, I approve. Tia Schelstedt?
I approve.
Uh, Kimberly?
Approve.
Claudia?
Approve.
Yvonne?
Approve.
Mark?
Approve.
Beth?
Approve.
And Crystal?
Approve.
Hey, Crystal?
Hi, guys.
Hello. All right, so that passed. Budget passed.
Thank you so much, Anita, for giving us this opportunity to make sure that the, the money goes to things that we want to do. Thank you.
Quiet. It's my pleasure. It's the right thing to do. This way we can get it into the hands of schools, which is really where it needs to be anyway.
Next on the agenda, we have the reassign of the schools liaisons.
Thank you, Yvonne. So as you all know, one of our members stepped down, Katia Remberg, very sad to not have her with us on the council. But so we, we have to do this reassignment of the schools. And Antonia, would you mind dropping that paperwork in the chat so that we can all just look at it together? You have it? Okay, I will drop it in the chat. So that is the list of the school liaisons. And I have highlights in the areas where we need to fill in. The schools are PS 130, PS 15, and K 280, and PS 10. So PS 10 and K 280 have the same principal, but they're in different buildings. PS 10 is a standalone building and then A 280, which is the BK Center, is co-located with MS 442 and BUGS. And then PS 15 is in Red Hook and PS 130 has two locations, one of which is co-located with MS 839.
839.
Right. Um, I would like to take PS 15 if that's okay with everybody. Or does anybody want to take PS 15 or PS 10 or K 280 or PS 130?
Um, since 15 is just two blocks away from me, I was going to take 15.
Okay, cool. I will put your name there then. Okay, well, I used to have 130, so I'm happy to back to 130. Anybody want 130?
I can do 130. I've never, I've never done 130. Sorry, I didn't know I was muted before. So I was talking to you.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, Antonia is going to take 130. And what about PS 10 and K 280?
I could give it a shot. My son goes to PS 130, so that's why I did it.
Okay. All right.
They got two buildings. I could give a little bit of PR.
Maybe you could write an intro to your principal.
Sure.
And maybe your PTA president for me.
All right.
That would be very helpful.
Please, and a symphony. All right, yeah.
Okay, that was like super fast. And if everybody is okay with this, I would then just make motion to vote on the list as it is with Yvonne taking PS 10 and K 280, Kimberly taking PS 15, and Antonia covering PS 130. Anyone want to second that motion?
I second it, Kimberly.
Okay, Kimberly, thank you so much. Antonia, you want to do the vote?
Okay. Hold on a second. I lost my place. Camille?
Approve.
Antonia, yes, I approve. Tia?
Approve.
Kimberly?
Approve.
Claudia?
Approve.
Yvonne?
Approve.
Mark?
Approve.
Beth?
Approve.
And Crystal?
Approve.
All right, great. All right, great. That's everybody.
Okay, great. So if somebody could just drop the revised link in the chat, that would be great, just for the record. Okay, so the next thing on our list is a resolution that relates to parents' right to opt out testing. And after the resolution, that speaks to our desire to have parents made known of their rights to opt out of the state test without repercussion. And also to include that in the DOE Parents Bill of Rights and to include that in the NICSa account where they could just click the button if they want to, to opt out of the test. And Antonia, do you mind if I ask you to up that link in the chat as well? I'm having some trouble here on my screen. So this was shared earlier in the week with CEC members and a number of people made comments on the resolution. And those comments and modifications were adapted. I know that Antonia has a comment she wants to make. Does anybody else have a comment?
No, I'd added mine in during the week, so thanks for.
Thank you.
For any of those.
Are you making this aloud, Camille, or?
Why don't you want to say what your comment is?
I just, I really wanted to see a resolve at the end of it that there should be some sort of testing, be it selecting representative groups of children to give the test to, to gain some insight on learning loss. I don't think it's, I don't think it's possible or appropriate to test every child at this point. I mean, we know we can't do these tests remotely at all. But I think it would be nice to have a representative sample of children so that we have some record, some baseline to know where we need to go.
Um, you know, I think that, that, you know, some kind of assessment definitely is necessary. But this resolution is about parents understanding what their options are, you know what I mean? And I feel like it's a very specific thing that addresses a very real problem. In the past, I brought it up at the last meeting that the city sent out a very misleading letter a couple of years ago that, that implied that, that parents had no right to opt out. And, and never addressed that misinformation. And, you know, it's very hard to believe it wasn't intentional. As we know, the state has been very adamant about trying to get people to take these tests, despite the fact that 20% of New Yorkers have, New York students have been opting out of the state tests, you know, for the past, I don't know, almost 10 years. So that, that would, that would be my opinion, is that this is a very focused, focused resolution.
So if it's okay, I will try to very quickly read this resolution. It's about a page and a half, so bear with me. The title being Resolution to Include Parents' Right to Opt Out of New York State Exams in the DOE Parents' Bill of Rights, Whereas the administration of the annual tests in English Language Arts, ELLA, and Math are required by the federal Every Student Succeeds Act. Actually, I already see a problem. We need to add science. Required by the federal Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA of 2015, and where the taking of those tests by individual students is not required. Whereas parents are led to believe that these tests are designed to provide important information about whether students are on track to graduate from high school with the critical thinking, problem solving, and reasoning skills they need to succeed in college and the modern workplace. Whereas state tests are ineffective in fairly assessing student acumen or tailoring education to individual students. Whereas these tests highlight disparities and divisions caused by many socioeconomic factors and the impact of systematically racist laws that have gone unchanged. Where there is no equitable way during a pandemic to administer a test like this, where 70% of students are working remotely and have limited access to internet, may have environmental implications, causing distractions for student focus. Whereas spending money on test-proctoring surveillance technology at a time when school budgets are lower than ever is an imprudent use of funds. Whereas test-proctoring surveillance technology is invasive and punitive for neurodiverse students. It requires cameras to be on when students have a variety of reasons for having them off. Face recognition technology can result in false readings for students of color. Whereas state tests have been used to justify shutting down schools and are no longer even required by the state for teacher evaluations. Whereas there are various alternatives to the state tests, which can effectively assess student learning, such as project-based assessments. Whereas the millions of dollars that the state spends on the tests should be put to better use. Whereas the stress of worrying about the impact of a particular score is damaging to children and creates a disincentive for learning and participation. Excuse me. Whereas teachers need flexibility in what and how they teach to address the trauma students have faced and continue to face during the pandemic and the reality that having access to and/or being able to study and practice via remote learning that is required to get a high score on these multiple choice tests. Whereas in 2015, the New York City Council passed a resolution calling on the DOE to amend the Parents' Bill of Rights and Responsibilities to include information about opting out of high stakes testing, excuse me, to distribute that information to parents at the start of each school year with the insurance. And no consequence will come to the student, teacher, or school. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to get some water. There must be too much dust here. Antonia, could I trouble you to take over, whereas six years later?
Um, hold on a second because I don't have it up.
Oh, sorry.
Let me go back.
I'll go back. I can jump in if you want, Antonia.
Oh, you're, if you're there, take over.
Yeah. She left off where six years later, there's no evidence the DOE has incorporated this information into the Parents' Bill of Rights. Whereas the DOE has created a separate federally frequently asked questions FAQ document that is not easily located on their website, requiring parents to search the New York State exams in order to locate said document. Whereas DOE did not update or create an FAQ document for 2021. Whereas information on opting out of New York State exams should be clearly posted on the same page as the other information on testing and accessible in all languages. And whereas the language used in FAQ's document directs parents to talk to your child's principal about opting out, but does not include details advising parents that they must opt out in writing. Principals are told that they should request that parents meet with them, yet parents are not required to attend said meeting. Therefore, be it resolved that CC15 calls on the DOE to, let me add that in there, to publish and distribute to every parent in the system, including charter families, a revised Parents' Bill of Rights that includes parents' right to opt out of the New York State exams with a link to the FAQ sheet, a sample opt-out letter, and a fillable form that parents can use to opt out of the New York State exams. And be it further resolved that DOE add a page to the Parents' Bill of Rights in New York City Schools account that will include information and a button to opt out. Be it further resolved that CC15 calls on the Biden administration to reevaluate the requirements of ESSA in light of the pandemic. Thank you. Thank you, Claudia.
Have a public.
Thank you, Claudia.
Number seven of the public, would you like to comment on the document? There are 16 people on the call now. Going once?
Twice.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve this document.
I second. So you want me to do the roll call?
We'll just.
Yeah. I approve.
Antonia, I approve. Tia? Approve. Kimmerly?
Approve.
Claudia?
Approve.
Yvonne?
Approve.
Mark?
Approve.
Bess?
Approve.
Crystal? Is Crystal still around?
She is here. Yeah, she was, she was dropping on and off.
In the chat.
Approve.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Crystal. Okay, great. So the next resolution we wanted to propose was voted on last night at an ECC meeting. There's two of them. The first one is regarding a mayoral control amendment, three in fact. And, okay, let me just find that and drop that in the chat.
I'll do it. I got it.
Okay, great. Thank you. So this resolution, you may have seen it previously. It's a sort of rewrite of something from May of 2000, not, not, right, December of 2018. And basically, there are three points made here. One of them is a point about the PEP member rep, who was written into the state law. And the way that it was written is that only CECs from community school districts precedents have the right to vote for the PEP member. And what this resolution is asking for is that all of the other citywide councils also have a vote for that PEP member. Presidents of CCSE, CCELL, CCHS does not include District 75, because District 75 is not written into the law. That is another issue for another time. So that's one of the asks, parity, basically. And then the other two, one of them is about changing qualifications for the English Language Learner Representative to include currently, it's, your status is based on if you have a current student at qualifies for ELL or has qualified in the last two years. What we would, what the resolution states is that that be extended to a parent who has a child of a student that qualifies for ELL services now or at any time in the past. And the purpose of that, because it's been very difficult, as we know, to solicit for and maintain, find candidates for this position. And so by extending qualifications, hopefully that would allow for greater participation. And then the last part of this is about the CCSE, CCHS, and CCELL councils specifically, that if their council members change status midterm, so say, for example, you're on CCHS and your child graduates high school in the first year that you're on the council, you would have to automatically step down. This happens frequently and it leaves the council in a dangerously precarious situation where they do not have a term. And so especially in those councils, we think it's really important that they stay whole for the full period of their term. And so this is the quest. And what I am asking you all tonight to do is we either are going to adopt this in its entirety or not. And so there really cannot be any changes made at this point based on what's on the table. Questions?
Um, you realize you skipped the revenue resolution, right?
Oh, I thought they were in other order. I'm sorry.
All right.
I was reading budget resolution and I was thinking that was what, our budget, sorry.
That's all right. So I think.
Control amendment.
Yeah, that's the second link that I put in the chat, so hopefully everybody's looking at the right one.
Hi, Camille, this is Bess. So, um, these changes all seem to only strengthen and make more possible the vision that we've been talking about. And I don't see any hiccup in the changes. It just seems like, yeah, like then people can stay on the council as, just as they're getting their chops and we can have a more chance of getting the representation and commitment to, you know, filling the spots. So do you see any, I mean, I've read through it. I don't know.
No, I wrote this.
Right. I mean, I don't know any other loophole that, you know, you're filling in the gaps with this thing. So was there something you wanted in there that never made it in?
Oh, in fact, I have sent it directly to the mayor and I'm asking him to sign off on it so that we can just push it through the state legislature before these CEC elections happen. And if they can change the law before May, and this change would go into effect immediately with the next term. So that is, that is my hope. And so as the ECC Legislative Committee co-chair, I'm going to be asking other CECs to adopt this ASAP.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I just want to add that then, given that we went through, I mean, we're still looking for the ELA parent. And I think these recommendations are so right on point in especially the part of, like, just let, let this parent, these members finish the term. And so, so we don't have to go through the whole thing of finding parents, which we all know how difficult it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else comments? Members of the public? Claudia, did you want to say something?
No. Sorry, I was drinking my coffee.
Okay, so then I'd like to make a motion to vote on this resolution. Let me just say what the name of it is. I lost it here on my screen.
Mayoral Control Amendment? Resolution on Updating Mayoral Control Law.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to vote to adopt ECC Resolution Updating the Mayoral Control Law.
I will second the motion. I will read the roll call. Camille?
I approve.
Antonia, yes, I approve. Tia?
Approve.
Kimberly?
Approve.
Claudia?
Approve.
Yvonne?
Approve.
Mark?
Approved.
Bess? Crystal? Great. Uh, all right, that's
Okay, right. So then, the, the one that I skipped over accidentally, I'm so sorry. This is another ECC Resolution, also out of the Legislative Committee. It's a resolution in support of new forms of revenue to supplement school budgets. And, um, very, very short story is that we went through a number of bills that all were opportunities to have more money in the budget. And we put them all into this resolution, most of which are similar to what we had talked about previously in our letters to Governor Cuomo about, I hate to use the expression, but taxing the rich. And so, um, if you look through it and you have any questions, there is a bill here. It is specifically a 4000. It's closer to the end. And it is about lotteries and betting. Some of you may have read about it in the past. In relation to off-track betting. And I am just trying to get further clarification on that. It's the Assembly Bill 4000. In the past, the way the language in that law was written, wasn't a direct path to education. And so now it is more of a direct path. And I'm going to try to get on a call with somebody at the Assembly just to confirm all of that, because that sort of fell through the cracks the last time. I want to make sure that it goes from the Assembly to the Senate way it's supposed to go. Because right now, it's just in the Assembly. Shall we read it aloud?
I think so.
Yeah, I just realized I didn't read that mayoral control one. I think I spoke extensively about it. Um, I will just jump over the description of ECC. In 2020, the state of New York was the epicenter of the COVID-19 pandemic crisis, which resulted in the entire state being shut down to ensure the well-being of New Yorkers. This resulted in a deficit necessitating drastic cuts across all agencies due to the loss of much-needed revenue. Many school districts had to cut staffing, enrichment, and resources in order to balance their own school budgets, in effect, limiting their ability to service school communities when they need it most. Whereas, New York State must take a greater role in funding New York City schools. And New York State legislators have been proposing new forms of revenue that would not only help with budget deficit, but would also help generate new revenue year after year. Whereas, the following are among the revenue streams that are affecting New York City public schools. New York City schools are owed $1.1 billion from the state of New York based on their own studentaire funding formula. In 2019, New York City received $1 billion in state funding, which was flat from the prior year. Comment in there. Um, Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Care Act provided New York State with $1.037 billion specifically for education for the current state fiscal year. However, New York State supplanted education funding by reducing the state contribution by $1 billion statewide. Many schools from across all boroughs are facing the devastating issue of student register loss and clawbacks from the New York City Department of Education. Whereas, this deficit is devastating school budgets across the city, across every borough, across every neighborhood, and across every socioeconomic reality. During these difficult times, it becomes necessary to explore other streams of revenue to complement and augment the reduction in the current budget streams to provide support and guidance in forecasting such as the following. School communities are suffering food and financial instability and require more social services, including mental health supports that many of our schools can offer in a safe, private environment with school staff with whom they are familiar. Where necessary, blended learning schedules added the financial burden to our school budgets with no relief to the New York State DOE or, I'm sorry, New York State Department of Education or New York City DOE. Schools will need more money than ever to help children recover from the trauma, isolation, anger, and fear that they have been harboring for the past 18 months. And where, for a child of eight years old, this is literally 20% of their education. Almost 8,000 families, mostly of color, have chosen to stay fully remote because they do not feel safe from the pandemic. And where remote learning must improve or we risk more students disconnecting socially and emotionally. Whereas, a coalition of diverse organizations has put forth the Invest in Our New York Act, which includes six revenue bills, which, if passed, can bring more than $50 billion in additional revenues. They include progressive income tax, capital gains tax, cares tax, billionaires tax, corporate tax, Wall Street tax, and there's descriptions of each of those there. Whereas, there are other revenue bills, the ed-ater tax, which will tax the often vacant second homes and would generate upwards of $2 million a year. Whereas, there are several currently proposed bills as follows. New York State Ultra Millionaire Income Tax Bill that would increase the income tax rate of those living in the state who earn over $1 million from the 6.85% to 8.82% range, to the 9.62% to 11.82% range, and would generate a projected amount of $4.5 billion in additional revenue. And then there's the full numbers, and those extend the top state income tax rate. There is a currently proposed bill to extending the top state income tax rate and provide for additional funding for the general support of public schools. It's a Senate bill. There's a currently proposed bill to amend the racing, parry, mutual wagering, and breeding law and the, and the tax law in relation to funding for a sound basic education. This is what I was talking about earlier, Assembly Bill 4000. And another S-4699 that relates to the taxation of monies, credit securities, and other intangible personal properties. I'm just going to give a shout out here to our new Senator, Brisport, who wrote that bill. Therefore, be it resolved that New York State has responsibility to its citizens to find new forms of revenue to ensure the stability of our state and the institutions that rely on state funds to function. It further resolved that ECC expects that New York State will not cut school budgets as we cannot demand that our schools work with less resources and expect our children to produce stellar results. It further resolved that federal government has offered COVID-19 federal relief funding and that federal funding should supplement and not supplant state funding. It further resolved that ECC supports revenue generating bills that will help our schools remain funded and not have to balance the budget off the backs of our children. So I want to, um, Antonia and Tia, who are also on the Legislative Committee for the ECC, and everybody who was able to make comments here in this document. It took a long time to put this together, and I really appreciate all of the work and dedication. Questions?
Should we put it to the public for a comment?
Yes.
Would anybody from the public like to make a comment? Okay. In that case, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this ECC Resolution.
I second. Um, Camille?
Approve.
Antonia, yes, I approve. Tia?
Approve.
Kimberly?
Approve.
Claudia?
Approve.
Yvonne?
Approved.
Mark?
Approved.
Bess?
Approve.
Crystal? Is Crystal, oh, she's here. Great. All right, that's unanimous.
Approve. Thank you all. Um, so we have some old business. Antonia, did you want to talk about the update on mid-year adjustments?
Yeah, this is, we're not voting. It's just a little update. There's a, another letter that has just come out from the PTA president of PS9. If you recall, um, they were in Prospect Heights and they were sort of one of the first schools to sound the alarm about the mid-year adjustments. I'll just read a little snippet of the letter. "We have learned that the DOE is willing to reduce this debt for all schools by 25%. While this is welcome news, any amount of clawback is unacceptable. Our schools require full amnesty from this debt and every last dime of funding it will take to make our schools whole and ready for the challenges that lie ahead." So that is from PTO President Jessica Flores of PS9. And many schools have signed on to this. Many PTAs, rather, have signed on to this. Um, so, uh, yeah, so basically, how come I can't click off this? Okay, there we go. Um, yes, the DOE announced that it's willing to give 25% amnesty on the schools that have register loss. And the other thing we found out is that this register loss is not exclusive to upper-income schools. In fact, it's kind of the opposite. A recent Chalk Beat article shows that, it, it showed all of the register growth across the city for every single school. And collectively, there's greater register loss amongst low-income students collectively. It's just that there's like a few dozen wealthier schools that have had this dramatic enrollment decline. But they represent actually a tiny share of the total citywide decline, which is actually being driven by drops in enrollment amongst low-income students. And amongst low-income students, that drop has been 4.3%. So this is definitely a citywide issue, contrary to what our chancellor has said.
Um, so let me just understand that, um, so citywide, it, so amongst low-income schools, it's four whatever percent.
Yeah.
But, um, at, at the, at, so it's a greater number of schools that have had a drop in enrollment. But if you look at, you know, some of these higher-income schools, the numbers are some, you know, some of them are like 17%. You know, it's, it's much, much higher.
It, yeah, so you have a, as, a small percentage of schools that have really dramatic loss. But when you look at the citywide enrollment loss, the numbers of students who've dropped off the rolls are predominantly low-income students who do not attend those.
Right, so it's more spread out.
It's much more spread out.
Yeah.
And it's also, you know, it's, it's greatest amongst the lowest grades. Our K and
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
The thing is that in District 15, it is because we are a high-income district and a, a high, um, popularity district. The schools that are showing the most dramatic loss in our district are, in fact, the schools that are more affluent in terms of the number of students.
Just in our district.
Specifically in our district. They have already, just, just so you have the information, they have already reconciled the, based on the numbers that I saw. They have like, already given back the 25%, but the numbers are still very high in terms of what schools owe.
You know, anything about the PTA funds are allowed to be used to help supplement losses? I mean, what I understand of PTA and PTA funds is those are supposed to be used in the same year that they were collected without significant rollover from year to year. So is there any conversation about, I haven't heard anything at all about PTA's or PTA's?
If I can, if I can impose on my PTA expert, Krist, have you heard anything?
Um, no, I have not. In general, that's, I don't think that would be an appropriate use of PTA or PTA funds and to fill those kinds of budget gaps. There are rules about what they can support in a school and can't. Like, they can't pay for core staff, things like that. And in terms of the PTA rollover, yeah, because fundraising should not be an end in itself. But PTAs are allowed to keep something on reserve. A lot of them have, you know, a heavy nut every month where they have to pay for whatever they're paying for, enrichments or et cetera. So it's, it's, you know, not supposed to keep half a million dollars on reserve, obviously. But they, they are allowed to keep some. So, I mean, maybe Steve, if he wants, has anything else to add. But, yeah, no, no conversation about that, as far as I know.
Um, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
How did that 25% get dropped and how can we get it down to zero? I mean, so
Yes, yeah, this is not something that we have any, well, me personally and, and all the superintendents in the city have anything to do. This is a, so the, the issue here is that this is, in any other year, this is a standard operating protocol that they do register projections and either you get money because you have more kids or you get, you lose money because you have less kids. It is a projection. It happens around now, like, a little later. And then you, you're, it is finalized on October 31st. And on October 31st, that's the number of kids you actually have. So that is then matched to what was projected and what you were given. Once you have been given the funding, which Once you have been given the funding, which you are giving it usually in June, then that's the money you can give it. So if in, on October 31st, if you have, let's say, 20 less kids, that now means that you owed to give back for 20 kids. That's normal. That happens every single year. This year, the issue is, first of all, they gave, there was a grace period. So the cutoff date was in October 31st, it was November 13th. Second was, there has been a significant decline in population in some schools. Some schools have had an increase in population. The example that I gave is 124, where because of the homeless shelters, they have 50 more kids. So they came out ahead of the game. But many of our schools where parents were able to move or had to move out of the community, they took the kids out of school, they put them in private school, they put them in other states. They themselves moved either upstate or to different states. And this has had a significant effect. So what has happened is that the original amount that was owed was huge. The best example I can give you and the one that's off the top of my head is PS2321, which you know is one of our most popular elementary schools. They had a decline of such significance that they owed $500,000 in give back. As of yesterday, the give back that I saw was about 25% less, which was like 370 something. So that's what I'm talking about. So the city, it was in Chalk Beat, it's all over the place that they reduced the amount. They were giving like a sale, they gave a sale.
Right, and I get all that. First of all.
And discount.
Anita, that's, you know, it's always good to hear it again. It's so clear what the issue is. But if it was given this discount, who put that pressure? How did that happen?
I, to be honest, I think that CECs, I think elected officials, put that pressure on it. I think the parents put that pressure on it. I think principals, everybody's pushing against this.
So that's what I'm saying, if that, if it.
Yeah.
Okay, so if that's what.
The CEC, the unions put pressure on this, so they gave back.
It's a huge media.
Huge thing. So will it completely decrease? No. Are there other issues that are going to come up? Yes. And I think that we have to see where this goes and where this takes us. But I think there is, this is, this is a very strange issue because I agree with you completely. I think they should be held harmless. Everybody thinks that. I don't know if that's going to happen. I hope that it'll be something that's considered. But I do need to tell you that the superintendents have all collectively. I can only speak for Brooklyn North because that's who I see on a daily basis. But all of the superintendents have made our voices heard about holding them harmless, about how important this is and about anything that takes resources away from schools in this timeframe.
Thank you. So well, I think that take home message then is to keep up the pressure.
Is there any conversation about like debt restructuring? I know that there's somebody here from the comptroller's office, right? No, they left?
I think they left.
Oh, they left already.
Anita, I have a question. And so, yes, we're talking about projections, forecasts and all that. And so, and people left. And so walk me through if they come back. I mean, there's a few thousand people that are left. So how does that work for the forecast, for the projection? Is it taken into account in 2022? Or my help people not give the money back now? And just.
It's a great question and it actually has happened this year for one of our schools. So again, 124 benefited from this. It took some pressure, but it benefited from it. So what happens is that, let's say, the opposite occurs. Let's say that you are in a school and next year, let's say, 50 kids left. And lo and behold, 50 kids come back and now they've given you, they've taken back money. Now they look at the projection again and now they owe you money because you have now 50 extra kids. So you are owed a certain amount of money. What happens is that usually in February, you get that money back. Usually in February. And if you have ever wondered why there is a lot of jockeying with kids going from one school to the other and it never happens before October 31st, this is why. Because once kids are on your register at October 31st, it'd be, they count towards the money you get. After October 31st, it doesn't matter if they leave or not because you still, you get to keep the money. So, but if you have more kids, then you are owed money. If you are in a situation, and this happened at 124, if you are in a situation where you are in need of money, basically what they do is they give you a loan until February with either some of the money or most of the money, depending on what you need for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Camille, we have a public comment period on the agenda before new business for some reason, but I don't.
Old, old business, yeah.
I mean, yeah, sorry, before. Yeah. No, is there anybody?
Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. I think that was just a mistake because we were dividing it between each of the sections. So the last thing we wanted to talk about was just just an update on the hiring process for the replacement of our administrative assistant. So we received a number of resumes. Antonia and I have sorted through them. We want to coordinate the hiring committee again. And so in the past, Kimberly was part of that, no pressure. We definitely need more than two of us. So is anybody interested in being involved in that?
Basically, what it entails is looking through the resumes, going on like a call where we do a phone interview and there's a script. So, you know, there will be one person asking the questions and then somebody else is taking notes and then we kind of discuss the candidates afterwards. And then we, we cut the number of candidates down after that. And then we do, well, we used to do in-person interviews. Now it'll be a Zoom interview with a few candidates. And there's also a process for that. So we would really appreciate some volunteers.
We have a rubric, it's already designed and effective. You know, we've been using it for a few years now.
What does FACE, does FACE get involved in this? Can they do the first screening? Do they have any role?
Steve and Human Resources, like they posted the application. It posts for two weeks, so that two week period is now over. We did get resumes, but nowhere near the quantity that we've received in the past. Antonia and I were discussing the possibility of reposting the advertisement for Help Wanted, which we are allowed to do. We would just need to let Human Resources know to do that. And DOE vets the applications, they get sent to us. But it's pretty much on us to do the majority of the work in the hiring process.
I mean, we kind of want to select our own AA, you know. We're going to be working with them closely, so.
That's a good point.
Volunteers.
I wish I could, I normally would in regular times. Right now, I'm pretty darn swamped. So it sounds timely that this needs to happen, so I'm sorry, I'm not able to.
And also, you guys tend to have meetings during the day, which.
Well, I mean, it like, it's really only two, three tops, two or three meetings tops. I mean, like, we would do, we could do it at lunch hour. We could do the phone interview during like lunchtime or something. And then the other meeting we could do in the evening. Or we could even.
Whenever, we could even do it on the weekend if we had to. I don't feel like that's particularly locked in with the time.
It's not locked in. We could work it around your work schedule.
I mean, the reality is that it would be good if more than two people were involved in this decision. But if you guys like feel like, you know, nobody has the time and you trust us to do this, we could do it.
Yay, thank you, Yvonne. Yvonne, Yvonne volunteers.
Yay, thank you. Okay, so then Camille, Antonia and Yvonne. Yay, thank you so much.
Yvonne, are you better nights or days or what, weekends? What?
If, I mean, if you, anytime is fine right now. But just give me, give me a day or, you know, a few hours and I can move things around and I can, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah. And if weekends work for you, for you too, it's fine too.
I'm totally flexible.
All right, great, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Does anybody have anything else they want to discuss before we adjourn? We're actually 20 minutes ahead of schedule. Yay. Okay, great. So then 8:36, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, all in favor, press end meeting.
Yes.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Good night, thank you very much.
Everybody, thank you to everybody for staying on the call. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Anita.
My pleasure.
All right, Carol.
Camille, now, when you end the meeting. We gotta download.
Press stop recording, would you? Let me, let me go to that other computer.